Okay, so item number two is 2.1, March 2016 firefighter wages.
We are requesting a resolution in the amount of $3,675 which are the firefighter wages for the period ending in March of 2016. If you recall in the information that was sent to council, two of those were prank calls, the third-party calls, and we've been so far doing very well in that aspect. So requesting a resolution moving forward to pay the wages.
Okay. Item number 3.1, variation application 04-16.
This is notification to let council know that a public hearing will be held on May 9th, 2016 as it relates to a request by True Blue Water Company Limited for variation to the established requirements to permit a storage shop, building, office, and wooden shed on property being lot 3 and 10, block 82 to 5, plan 50 weight at 1645 Big Noe Avenue. So it's notification of the upcoming variation hearing.
Okay. I guess we'll ask questions that we have then or later. I'm just wondering because like I know he doesn't, if there's like the laneway or something in between, right?
Correct.
So like, is that going to be sorted out by the time it comes to us?
This is the reason why he's doing this.
Okay.
This has been an applicant that has been trying to legalize a building that was placed on the property not knowing that there was a public lane in between that was closed and is now owned by someone down the street from them. So they're going to be in the future making application for subdivision, but they want to continue with their development right now, so this is the legal process that they're following.
Okay. Okay. Item number 3.2, Community Futures North Central Development. Oh, sorry, right, that was a presentation. It's right on the next slide. I'm like, uh, why do you guys look stunned? Did I read the wrong agenda? Sorry.
Madam Chair, my name is Tim Johnston. I'm the general manager for Community Futures North Central Development, and I'm here this evening along with Chris Smith from Ducks Unlimited to share with you some information regarding a project that has been going on for about the last year, which some of your councillors are aware, and that is the discussion amongst a number of stakeholders and rights holders in northern Manitoba about the creation of a declaration of common values for the sustainable development of the boreal in northern Manitoba. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, Community Futures North Central Development is a community economic development agency, very similar to Cedar Lake Community Futures right here in the Paw. We were approached following a session that was held here last year, and councillor Gibb attended that session, and asked to coordinate a discussion in northern Manitoba of stakeholders and rights holders about the need for greater communication and dialogue on what is important to northerners with respect to economic development and future development in the north. So the work has been ongoing for about the last year. As I said, North Central was approached by Ducks Unlimited. We answered to Ducks Unlimited on a contractual basis, and I'd just like Chris to share a few words in terms of the role of Ducks Unlimited in terms of this discussion.
Sure. Thank you very much, Tim, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk this evening. I used to live in the Paw and some of you may remember me, bringing a DU down off of Roals Island. I've since moved on. I actually run our boreal program, boreal forest program, which is the northern part of Manitoba for Ducks Unlimited Canada. It's an incredibly important region for Ducks Unlimited because it literally, you know, represents about half of the waterfall that are produced in this province and holds probably about 60% of the water, wetlands in this province. Incredibly important area. Several years ago, we got engaged with an organization that's called the International Boral Conservation Campaign, which strives for an aspirational goal of balancing development with conservation across Canada's boreal forest. We have this unique opportunity in this country where we've got so much of our north that's yet to be developed, where we actually have an opportunity to look at balancing this development with conservation. Living here for well over three, five years, I recognize and realize the incredible importance our resources are to our economy, yet at the same time I love to recreate like everyone else in this room. So this gave us as an organization a great opportunity to collaborate with other non-government organizations to promote this balanced approach of developing our boreal forest in Canada. About three years ago, this international boreal conservation campaign started to focus on Manitoba for a couple of reasons. One, even though the boreal represents about 80% of our province, probably only 20% of it has actually been developed, which leaves a tremendous opportunity to perhaps take a different approach of development that's happened in the past. Secondly, the government of the day had indicated that they wanted to develop a boreal plan, but sort of develop an architectural document for how to develop the north going forward. So we saw that as a tremendous opportunity, have done an awful lot of work in sort of generating some awareness around this idea. But what was really missing was this northern voice that we felt was critical, and I've lived in the north long enough to know how much we all feel about how sometimes we get told what's the best for us. And that's sort of where Tim fits in, in that we were at the boreal forum on OCN February two years ago, where the province had a lot to dialogue around this notion of a boreal plan. What was really interesting at that time was how much people were engaged and interested in this concept, in this idea of developing the north by the north. And so we took advantage of that opportunity. Tim was a guest speaker, and we saw his organization as one that had not only the leadership skills but the networking abilities to start to bring people with an interest in developing the north as well as conserving the north together. And so over the last year or so, Tim has led our group and has made tremendous progress on what we're calling a declaration of common values for northern Manitoba and how to develop it further. And Tim can speak to it further. I've been here in the north for well over three, five years now, and I have never encountered such an opportunity in terms of togetherness and a vision for what people might want to see moving forward, particularly given the fact that we have so many resources that have yet to be developed and so much wilderness that has yet to be for people to have an opportunity to enjoy. So I'll pass it back to you, Tim, just to, that's sort of been our interest as an organization, my role representing to you, taking care of our interest in northern Manitoba and elsewhere. I'll pass it back to Tim.
Thanks, Chris. So following the session that took place at OCN to initiate the process, there was a discussion that took place over lunch and following the meeting where a number of people indicated a desire to keep the discussion going and the need to have that discussion in northern Manitoba. And we saw a unique opportunity in that a provincial election was just held, and the thought was that each of the political parties, and our process is a nonpartisan process, but each of the political parties had presented a vision for northern Manitoba. But it was felt from a northern perspective, it was extremely important to ensure that there was a northern voice and a perspective from the north. So over the course of the last year, a number of meetings have been held. It's included stakeholders from industry, conservation, municipalities, as well as economic development agencies, and rights holders, including First Nation, Manataf Maiti Federation, and other organizations that play a role in economic development in the north. It became very clear, including the session, the original session in the Paw, that there was a real willingness and a desire to have a northern position. And I don't think that's a surprise to anyone around this table. That's been something that's been talked about for many, many years. It was a unique opportunity leading into an election that was a motivator in terms of bringing people together. So a number of meetings were held. The participation rate has been tremendous. I would suggest that there's not another example, certainly in recent history of northern Manitoba, where you were able to put representatives from those groups in the same room and come out with an outcome that is positive. What we found was there was a desire to move forward fairly quickly, and so we did that. Following a number of meetings, we came together again in the Paw last year, OCN, and councillor Rock attended that session. And at that time, we drafted the declaration. And it's interesting, the declaration originally started out as an accord. An accord is an agreement amongst parties that they will move ahead in a certain way. What we found in that discussion was, we're not at that step yet. We still are at the step of ensuring that there's a common vision, there's a common understanding, and that's why we moved from an accord to a declaration of common values. So the draft was put out last November, and it was circulated, and at that time, it was requested of a variety of all the stakeholders and rights holders that they look at endorsing the document, which would give it credibility in terms of moving forward with discussions with the government. I can say to you that as of now, we've had a tremendous response. From the municipalities, we've had the town of Churchill, the city of Thompson, the city of Flintton, the town of Snow Lake, all passed resolutions endorsing the declaration, and the town of Lynn Lake has sent a letter of support pending a decision by the Marcel Colomband in terms of their position on the declaration. We've had a number of First Nations as well sign onto the document. We've had industry look at the document, and a subcommittee of the Manitoba Mining Association has signed on to the declaration. So we're very pleased with where we're at. It becomes even more critical in terms of moving ahead now as northern Manitoba and in the dialogue with the new government. As you're aware, each of the political parties in the last election had a position. We had opportunities north from the former government. We have Northern Lights, or Northern Lights was presented by the current, the recently elected government. Both of those documents served as basis for developing this, but more importantly, we believe the declaration will be able to serve them in terms of forming an action plan to move ahead with where they want to go. So our hope is that with your support and your resolution or endorsement through resolution, that it will add again some more credibility, and we will have all of the major municipalities in northern Manitoba standing united and saying it is important that when the government moves forward in terms of looking at northern development, that they consider some of the key elements or the common values, and those are prosperity, balance, cooperation, community benefits, rights and respect, financial attractiveness, knowledge and clarity. This document provides for a statement on each of those values. There is nothing here that should cause concern for anyone. What it is, is a foundation to build relationships and to look in terms of what projects can move forward. I think that, as Chris indicated, it's rare where you can get stakeholders and rights holders to agree, but it is clear that we have a common vision in terms of economic development and the sustainable development of the boreal. So I hope, and I would like to share with each of you, the copy of the declaration. I would ask that you as a council consider signing on and passing by resolution the declaration. I want to acknowledge his worship, Jim Scott, and the role that he's played attending the meetings as a steering committee member throughout the process that leads us to this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We did have an opportunity to meet with the Paw Chamber of Commons and councillor Commodore, and had an excellent discussion, and they've been another one of the key players right across the region in terms of involvement. So with that, I'd ask if there's any comments or questions, and I look to leave some information for you as well.
Thank you. Chad?
I just had a quick question. You said that you've met with First Nations. Have you had First Nations that have passed bad council resolutions supporting the document? I didn't.
Yeah. So far, we have Norway House Cree Nation that has looked at, has passed a resolution. We have the initiation Cree Nation Nelson House that is looking at it. It's our understanding that OCN is considering a resolution, and we've had good.
Grand Rapids letter of support.
So we've worked with Manitoba Today Now Yoka Makunak, MKO, as the point of connection with First Nations, recognizing the sovereignty of each First Nation, and have through the grand chief's office reached out to individual First Nations and asked them to consider the declaration. We've actually had two additional in-person meetings with the chiefs, so we continue that dialogue, and we're fairly confident that the support is, will continue to come.
Does anybody else have questions? Thank you, gentlemen. You'll leave some information with us?
Excellent. So what I'll do is I can leave you copies of the declaration, and the other one is we do have a history of the declaration. We've spoken to that somewhat tonight, but we'll leave some copies of that, too. And lastly, if anyone is interested, we have some brief information in terms of, a website has been set up that contains the names of all those that have passed resolutions. That's public, as well as all the documents, including some of the documents here. We use the Friendship Accord, I believe is the correct title, from here as one of the founding documents for the discussion. So I leave that with you, and I look forward to your dialogue, consideration, and hopefully a resolution and support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just think of one thing?
Yes, of course.
I just think that when everybody works together, awesome things can be accomplished, and everybody's on the same page. And they're talking, like you said, this is just a start. There's no decisions. Everybody's starting, and so far, everybody's agreeing. Got to start somewhere, and it's good.
It was pretty cool before, I mean, seeing people start it all off. It's just, you know, it takes a lot of time for the people to learn how to do this.
Yeah. No, just thank you, Nate, to make that point. It's nice to say.
I get it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
We'll continue on with our agenda. Item number 4.1, Kinsman Campground Building.
Basically, we have had, the council has discussed in the past, developed the future of the campground building, and as a result, the last time we received tenders, it was significantly high. I had Alan Batty, the purchasing agent, put out another request to the public, and we got another bid in for $11,550 for the demolition of that property. In the meantime, we did receive a letter requesting, or a letter from, it's from Northern Lights Animal Shelter, requesting if the town of the Paw would consider donating the building to them. So my question being, this has been on board for the last two years, so we have two options here. Is council willing to consider giving them the building? Basically, they had said that they would have the building used as a washroom. It could be accessible to the public during the hours that they're open. Or do we want to demolish this?
I guess, I think there's three options. With the new government in place, one of their mandates, part of their Northern Lights strategy as well, was tourism, right? So when we go down our river, that's the gateway to our river and our probably most important recreation gem, you want to call it, or tourism gem. So I think we have three options. Let them use it, plan to get rid of it, or look at a tourism-based option. To me, it's not the right fit for animal shelter because that's, think of the number of people that come down there, and that's what they're seeing day in and day. And not only that, once we've relinquished it, we've lost control. So we've lost control to the entrance to our riverfront, in a sense, right? We no longer control the optics on a big section. So if, I think, I agree with you, Randy, we got to do one thing or the other. I wish you could start wearing glasses on the back of your head with googly eyes or something.
I'm listening to you. She's not.
We've got to do something, without a doubt, we got to do something. But let's see what comes out of this new government, if anything. If nothing comes out, then I would say get rid of it. But we need to be careful who we're offering it up to, because once it's out of our hands, it's out of our hands. And that location is a prime piece of real estate, right? It's right out the boat launch, and it has huge tourism potential, and we're giving that up.
Brad, Rachel, I'm sorry, I don't know who's first.
My concern when I saw this was, I don't oppose the idea of a shelter and whatnot, but if somebody were coming and saying they want to build a brand-new animal shelter in that location, I'm sure any council would say, well, no, that's not the best site for it. So simply because there's a building there that we have to do something different with, I don't think there's sufficient reason to turn it over that way. And it is sort of the gateway to the river for us. It always has been, as long as I've lived in the community, and we don't want it to simply become the animals' gateway to the river. And, you know, so tourism, hopefully, will expand and grow, and we'll be able to do something, but in the meantime, I don't think it's appropriate at this time.
Chad?
I'm not 100% against the idea. I don't, I don't think it's a terrible idea. I do share some of the same sentiments as councillor Rock and councillor Gibb, but even before we can make a decision on it, we need to have some more background information from Northern Lights Animal Shelter?
Yeah.
Because we received a quote, a quote from a contractor to renovate that building, and it was pretty, pretty high. I just don't know what renovations they're planning on doing to it and that sort of thing, where those funds are coming from. And I guess my other point would be, I don't think we would ever completely donate the building, maybe look at some type of leasing option with them, like, you know, something like that, but I don't, I don't think we would ever just 100% give up that building. And I don't, that's my thoughts on it, whatever.
Margaret?
I have to agree with both Brian and Alan. I don't think that's an ideal place for an animal shelter. You know, they desperately need someplace, but as, you know, Brian pointed out, if one was going to be built there and they came to us, I would say no. And I just don't think it is the right place for an animal shelter. Like, okay, so you have, there's the inside, but the animals need to be outside, too, so there's going to be more fences, and, I'm sorry, poop. So there's that to think of, too. And walking dogs and stuff, so I really don't, and with a lot of people frequenting that area, there'll be lots of dogs barking and et cetera, et cetera, a little bit of noise. Just might not be the ideal area, and hopefully, maybe in the near future, something will come up. But with the groups working together, that's a positive there, too, because they're now working together, maybe? You work together, you get a little further. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. I feel like I would like to see the building used for something. I mean, it seems a little bit wasteful to just demolish it, and I know that we've had a few other groups who have maybe not formally, I know, I think it was the farmers market group sent like a formal letter, but other groups have kind of approached, maybe not formally in sending a letter, and said that they would like the building, so I think definitely something we need to keep on our radar and decide exactly what it is we're going to do with the building. I know, you know, we wanted quotes for demolition, but now it's kind of sounding like maybe we don't want to demolish it, and I think maybe allowing the farmers market group to use it is a little bit more appropriate, I guess, for lack of a better word, to that area. It's not, they're already down in the, in the park. That's something that would attract tourism. Maybe not, you know, people might not be driving totally, but if you have people who are already visiting, they would go down to the park and stop and check that out. So I think unfortunately, it's gonna, the Kinston Campground Building is gonna have to stay on the agenda, and we're really gonna have to decide what it is we're gonna do with the building.
So the directive is just leave it be? I'll be honest, this has been on our table for four years.
I know.
Every time it comes back, we have new opportunities, new plans. The building is still there. We've done repairs to it.
Yes.
Because it was not cost-effective.
Yeah.
So as long as you guys are okay with knowing that we did our part, we provided the information.
Yeah.
We're leaving in your hands moving forward. It's not a lack of providing the information.
As much as I would love to think like the new government is gonna come in and it's gonna be a wonderful tourist center, I mean, we have a visitor information center that doesn't run because it's just not feasible. It's not sustainable to run a visitor information center, so I would love to see something like that happen, but I think we need to also be kind of realistic.
Just closing. I wasn't saying it should be a tourist information center. It should be something that's tourism-based. And they've said there's gonna be funding along that way. If there isn't, I'd say we make a decision, set a date, like, you know, by December 31st. If there's no programming in place, then this is, Randy's right, this is gonna go on forever. So we make a decision, right? Or we're gonna tear it down.
That sounds good, to set a date.
I mean, because you can keep hoping this next year, there's gonna be a grant, and there's gonna be a program, but if there's not, and this is the first year of the mandate, they're gonna come out right away. So if you know something's on the board, then it's open for discussion. If it's not, it's time for it to go. Because one of the issues we have, as we know, with taxes, right? We have too many assets. We have too many assets, and we can't afford them all. So even though there's little or no cost, if you're gonna renovate it, and now you're back to square one, where you've spent money to renovate it all, and like we have, back to now we're running another building that we already have too many of. So in that regard, if something's coming down the pipe, that's great. I think we should jump in it, but if it's not, then it's got to go. Otherwise, we're never gonna get out of this tax situation we're in, because we always get sucked into the trap, right? Like, oh, we'll get a new building, and here's all the money to do it, but they never give you the operating money for it. And as taxpayers in town, we're paying the price for that.
So we're going to set a date by a certain time?
If nothing's done, then?
Well, if you set December 31st, that lines up with our budget, right? So we know one way or the other, we can put it in or come in there, but make a decision and move on.
Maybe let's just do a quick roundabout, like demolish it or like let a group use it? What do you feel about it?
I would be okay with letting somebody use it, but it would have to be under the right circumstances, and it would have to be the right fit. I don't think we should ever completely donate the building and the land to anybody, but if somebody was willing to come up with the right plan, I think I would be okay with allowing some type of group to use that building, but the proper plan hasn't come across our table yet, in my view.
Brian?
Yeah, I think the other thing that I wonder about, and I'm just not clear on what is in the plans, is what is the plan for that area? How does, how would an animal shelter fit into that riverbank plan? Because I agree with Chad, is once you give somebody the opportunity to do something with it, you can't turn around in a short period of time and say, oh, sorry, your money's wasted, we're gonna bulldoze it because we want it for something else. They're gonna be looking for a long-term commitment, and I don't think we're in a position to give that. And I like the idea of, okay, let's take a look at it, let's see if it fits into any kind of a long-range vision for the riverbank and whatnot, and how that happens, and decide whether you keep it or demolish it in the near future. The other question I would ask, too, is do we have a, what's our risk factor on that building? Because, you know, if something, if a tragedy were to happen, and, you know, is the town on the hook, and we always have to worry about that. It's a cost, so.
Margaret?
I like the date thing. Maybe, you know, if you put the date out there, okay, if it's not done by a certain time, we're going to take it down. And I, and right now, I would see taking it down. Because it's been, what, you're saying, four years? Four years. Four long years. So maybe somebody's just sitting there and just needs the little push or little shove, or somebody's gonna come up with this idea. Like, we have the Market Garden, which is growing, and there's a lot of people going there, but then you have to have the commitment and... and it's going to be there.
Alan?
Same what Brian said. If there's no feasible use for that building that fits with that area, I'd say by December 31st, then it's gone. Otherwise, we'll talk about it next year.
Do you guys know anything you want to add?
Could we consider before December 31st, just for the simple fact this is pushing us another year? Like, and we have a contractor.
Sure, that's fine.
If, that's okay, because we have a contractor that was willing to do demolition, which was $80,000 less than what we were originally told. The reason the building got to the point it was, was because it was beginning to be like an issue with safety. People were going there, we were spending money patching it up, we were doing all these things for a building that was just not cutting it anymore. So I would like to even see if we can talk to the contractor and maybe look at October or September so that we can still demolish it this year if he'd consider the same price. I would hope that they would have a general idea about that time, if they're gonna have monies for something like that.
That would be better.
And again, like, and my apologies with this, but we go through this every year for the last four years and it's still there. And I'm concerned, like you are, Brian, that someone is gonna get hurt yet. And then we are liable for it. And I don't think people realize, I'm not sure if these people had the opportunity to, or this organization had the opportunity to go through it. It's in some rough shape. It's in some very rough shape.
Also, I mean, like, how, they could say, yeah, we use a building as a, as a shelter, but if they're gonna go in there and spend, have to spend $20,000 or whatever.
You're looking insulation, you're looking water, you're looking at roofing, you're looking at the walls are pretty much, the floor is all apart, like your bathrooms are all smashed. You're siding everything. It is a money pit and that's what brought us to this point.
Maybe, maybe that's what's lacking in this discussion. I think it's probably been close to 20 years since I've been in that building. So I have no idea about it. My, my vision of its condition is way out of whack. And, and maybe if I saw it, I would be saying, hey, demolish it.
We'll give you a key.
I don't, I don't, I've never been in the building in my life.
Couple of years ago, Randy and I went down there to check something out. We called the cops because it smelled so bad in that bathroom. We thought there was someone in there. Oh! And that's one of our concerns is, one day we might have an issue there. People are able to get in and it's gonna be starting right away. We've even had problems with people going into the caboose or down by the river where you've had to dig the fence in. This is just something waiting for people to break in and hurt themselves.
So maybe it's not a wise idea for us to delay this decision?
Well, fear to say, your recommendation, maybe it's September, October, stick to that.
Very good.
September, you can still. Yeah, we can arrange a tour for those of you that wish to.
I'm going.
Let's have our next council meeting.
If, this is a committee hole, so if we were gonna move a motion, we could put it on the next meeting agenda and gives us two weeks to do a visit and they'd say yea or nay to it and then a decision would be made, one way or the other.
And we can contact the person that put the bid in on it and let them know what's going on.
And, and that way, we'll move it forward rather than wait, because it'll be just our luck that the accident will happen sooner rather than later.
I agree.
So bring forward at the next agenda, council to tour facility.
Everyone, everyone meet here at 5:45 and right before the next council meeting, we're all gonna go and look at the building.
I'll go before then. I don't wanna wait.
Hard hat, meat, stool, toe boots, please. And then we'll contact the contractor and let him know what's going on. Is that meeting what you're asking?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Let him know what's going on in terms of what?
What are we gonna do with the building? Like if we're gonna demolish it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
And I think our response to the Northern Lights Animal Shelter is just gonna have to be like, we just don't feel that that's an appropriate location for an animal shelter.
That's your directive? Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. Like I said, if there was a more detailed plan, I still don't think, I don't think you would ever be in an animal shelter.
So come see me for, to go down there. I'll give you the keys.
We'll make a date.
Sam's been in there a few times.
Um, okay. So are we okay to move along to the next item on the agenda?
I think it was a pretty good directive, yeah.
Okay. So 4.2 is Northern Lights Animal Shelter working together? I don't know. Is there more on that or?
Yeah, on, at the March 29th Committee of the Hole meeting, council reviewed a letter from Bonnie Meadows, the owner of Precious Pets, requesting a donation of $2,500 to $5,000 for a spay neuter clinic. We've also been getting requests from Northern Lights Animal Shelter and also Paw Cats and Kittens. A letter was sent asking them to work together to come up with a plan as to how we can move forward and then council would look at a general plan. The reply basically is, we will work together to fundraise in many areas such as building, maintenance, staffing where necessary, regular animal care and supplies, medical costs that are not recouped from the adoption fees and much more. A copy of this was also sent to Bonnie Meadows and Lorraine McIntosh. This letter came from Northern Lights Animal Shelter. I believe at this point, again, we remind and make it very clear as to council's directive, that come up with a total plan of all groups and it be presented here. That was the initial recommendation of council. I think it's great that they're gonna do fundraising together, but rather than individual groups coming and asking for funds, if they could work together and come up with pretty much a big plan moving forward.
For sure.
It would be easier for them and it would be easier for budgeting purposes for council.
Absolutely.
So with your permission, submit a letter saying continue your work forward and provide that plan?
Yep, I agree.
And that's all we, told them, that's what we wanted right from the get-go? Okay, all right.
Keep the discussion moving.
Okay. Item number 4.3, capital purchases for arena and pool.
When completing the budget, there were some things that were left off of the capital plan, being the pool, the humidifier system and the arena, same co-guarded status. So we're asking, there is money in the reserve funds for these projects and we are asking if we could have a resolution of council to transfer money from the reserve funds to pay for these purchases. It should've been part of the capital plan, it was dropped by error, so we're asking for a resolution.
Well, I think because we, we sent the KRC capital budget back and asked them to prioritize and that kind of got lost in the shuffle of all the parks and baseball diving and repairs.
Yeah, these are things that are pretty important to our operations and we do have the money in our reserve funds to cover them.
Yep.
Is that, would the timing of that request drive when, when we get a resolution coming forward to council? Or are we gonna commit the dollars now and, and then at some point in the future, the work will get done?
I say if we're gonna do the work, we have the transfer. We do the resolution. If the work doesn't get done, we don't make the transfer. If that's what you're asking?
Well, what I, what I'm concerned about is as soon as we commit the dollars, whether the work is done or not, those dollars are committed. And if another crisis comes along, our reserves are diminished by our decision and so it's just sort of a chicken or egg thing. I, I'd prefer that it come close to you, okay, we're gonna do it in a month, push it through the.
The great joys of this is because it is a specific reserve fund, we can only use it and that's why the resolution would state for pool, the humidifier system for that amount and for the arena. It doesn't just go into an automatic account. You can only use it for those purposes, otherwise we can't use it.
Yeah, okay, so.
So it is kind of a safeguard to ensure that it is getting used for those purposes.
Right. So I guess my, my other question then is, is if they request it, it's because they're gonna get the work done in the, in the fiscal year.
That's, yeah.
Okay, as long, as long as that happens, that's fine.
And these purchases won't completely deplete those reserves. Those reserves will still have like balances, fairly healthy balances in them after the work.
And it doesn't get transferred until you need it for that purpose. So if something happens that doesn't go through, we have no authority to spend it on anything else, otherwise it has to go back to a resolution of council. Or if it's anything other than that reserve, it has to go to a public hearing. Doesn't just go into a general operating of anything or general capital.
Chad, do you have something?
This guarded status thing, how long does this guarded status thing keep going? Like, I feel like we've been talking about it for two years now.
Probably four, just like we were about the Kinsman Campground Building, yes.
It, it just keeps going? Like, is, is there annual costs that are related to this thing?
No, what it is, it was different, different things that we brought forward to bring it up to guarded status. Jody may be even be able to provide more information on this.
I think it's just one of those projects that just actually never did get completed. And there's still some leftover items that need to be completed and then we just didn't have the proper, I don't want to say contractors, but the proper people coming in to review it, to tell us what needed to be done. So now we have had that done and equipped done for us in that amount in the last couple months here, so.
Can we build the proper people this time?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Everyone's okay with that, then?
Yep.
Okay, so we can continue with the resolution moving forward to transfer from those reserve for those specific purposes?
Yep.
I'm fine.
Okay. 4.4, reserve fund bylaws.
If you recall in our capital plan, or when we were doing our financial plan, pardon me, we talked about putting money into the reserve fund each year to be using, used for renovations and other buildings that are done through those funds and also to start putting money away for election, rather than waiting four years and having to establish that much. So this is basically a request if we could move forward and prepare the necessary bylaws and bring them forward to the next meeting for first reading.
For sure. Any other questions? Okay, moving right along, 4.5, payroll and accounts.
We basically have a financial report as it relates to general checks in the amount of $54,064. Some of the costs associated with this were audit and legal fees being a little higher and the handy van flow-through funds for their operations. We also have KRC general check register and as you could see, it was an extremely large amount, but it was basically covering the period of February to April. It was $312,000 and a lot of this was payroll paid to the Town of the Paw. It always looks scary and when I see some of the money that they're paying to the Town of Paw, I'm going, oh my goodness, what is that? It's we pay their payroll and they pay us back. So it would be a resolution moving forward to accept those accounts.
4.6, handy van?
The Paw Handy Van has submitted their 2015 audit for council's review. They've informed us that they have a surplus in the amount of $11,667. They would like to use that surplus to put forward for the vehicle replacement fund. They were not successful in getting the grant of $50,000 under the Canada Manitoba Infrastructure Small Communities Transportation Fund.
Can you say that one more time?
I know, I'm like running out of breath. So what they want to do is apply for additional funding and they're hoping to use the surplus monies to put forward to the purchase of a new handy van. They've been having a lot of problems with their existing handy van, it's been out of service several times, so they're in desperate need of moving forward. Yeah, and we generally should receive, or should pass a resolution receiving their audit.
Okay.
Just so that it's on our books.
Questions or comments on that? All right, moving right along, 4.7, water to taxes transfer.
What we're gonna require here is we have utility counts that need to be added to taxes in the amount of $51,089.08. This is ongoing, this is generally done quarterly. We've been behind a little bit in the previous years. We are now getting outstanding water bills added to taxes, which is part of the municipal act. So this is a large sum and we would like this done prior to the tax statements being developed.
Okay.
Well, notices have been given out, people have been given opportunity.
This is the second, the second transfer, right? We had one.
Yeah.
Okay. I was like, wow, did all those people come in and pay and now we're transferring way less or are we transferring more?
Those are transferred, this is addition. So that would be a resolution for adding those utility accounts to taxes.
Okay. That's good. Can somebody move us into in-camera? If you click on the in-camera thing on your agenda, it'll tell you the thing you need to say.
Moved by Councilor Rock.
Second of our media.
Seconded by Councilor Zalinski. Be resolved that we do now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the Committee of the Hole with Deputy Mayor Morris in the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.